The regular meeting of the Independent School District 279 School Board is called to order at 6:00 PM on April 22nd, 2025. This regular business meeting of the Oseo School Board is being conducted in the boardroom of the Educational Service Center. The meeting can be monitored electronically by streaming online from the district website. An archived recording of tonight's meeting will also be available on the district website. Seated in front of you this evening, from my left and your right are Director Kelsey Dawson, Director Erica Foster, Director Thomas Brooks, myself, Tanya Prince, Director Keith Chase, and Director Sarah Mitchell. Also present in the boardroom is Superintendent Dr. Kim Heil and members of the superintendent's cabinet. Due to scheduling conflicts, our student board representatives are not able to attend this evening. They are really busy and very talented, so spring is keeping them busy. All right, those of you who can, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Director Mitchell, will you lead us?
Yes. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, are there any additions to the agenda? So seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
So moved by Director Dawson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Brooks. All in, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion passes, six to zero. All right, the next portion of our board meeting is recognitions. And we're really excited that tonight we have several recognitions this evening, highlighting the amazing accomplishments of our many scholars. I'll be calling on each coach for each recognition to step up to the podium for introductions. After each individual or team is recognized, we'd like to get a group picture, so don't run out the door. Board members and Dr. Howell, will you please join me in the front of the board dais to offer our congratulations? Okay, our first recognition is the Oseo Senior High School's Ella Hegelin. Ella finished second in the state on the balance beam. Coach Tammy Hoff, will you please step up to the podium and introduce Ella?
Hello. It's my pleasure to introduce Ella Hegeline, a talented student athlete representing Oseo Senior High School. Ella is a sophomore and recently showcased her dedication and skill at the state gymnastics meet. She competed against the best in the state. Ella earned an impressive second place on the balance beam with a score of 9.45, and she also earned nine place on floor.
Congratulations. The next recognition is Oseo Senior High School's Vivian Schroder. Vivian was second in the state wrestling. Coach Antonio Castro wasn't able to be here this evening, but we have our assistant coach here. Assistant Coach, will you please introduce Vivian?
Hello, my name is Andy Douglas. I'm one of the coaches that are here at Oseo High School. Today, it's my pleasure to be able to bring recognition to one of our district's standout athletes, Vivian Schroder. Vivian is a second-year wrestler, first-year captain on Oseo's high school wrestling team. Vivian's first year, she showed a lot of natural skill and a lot of tremendous ability to compete hard. At the end of her first season, she was able to achieve fourth at our Section V, section tournament. Vivian was able to build on that success with a very impressive junior season, placing second in the state at this year's tournament. In doing so, Vivian is not just the first girl at Oseo, but the first in our district to achieve this recognition. So congratulations.
And the next recognition goes to the Maple Grove Senior High School Jazz Dance Team for second-place finish at state. Coaches Jill and Stacy, will you please step up to the podium to introduce the team?
Thank you so much for having us here today. My name is Stacy Markwart, and I have the sincere privilege of sharing the head coach position for the Maple Grove Dance Team with Jill Lusti. And on behalf of Jill and our entire coaching staff, again, thank you so much for extending the invitation to recognize these incredible athletes here today. The 2024-2025 Maple Grove varsity jazz team had a spectacular year, earning a jazz conference championship, a jazz section championship, and concluding the season with a second-place finish at the state AAA Jazz Competition. This group of athletes was made up of seventh graders to seniors and was led by a trio of captains who helped define goals and pushed everyone to bring their best to every practice and every performance. Each athlete on the team pushed themselves to represent our team, school, and community to the very best of their ability, and for that, we are immensely proud. Year after year, this team continues to do impressive things, building on the success of the accomplished athletes and teams that came before them. And I'm certain that these individuals have laid a foundation for the legacy of this team to continue. Please join me in recognizing the members of this past season's jazz team. Bella Vacetti. Emerson Velzess. Aubrey Brown. Sloane Eckstein. Linley Farren. Audrey Goldsmith. Goldie. Carly Janiky. Captain Carly Janiky. Brittany Johnson. Matielakoff. Presley Lopez. Natalie Madden. Captain Olivia Nagel. Captain Haley Ritter. Alyssa Springer. Stella Zimki. And alternates Haley Caldwell, Monroe Johnson, and Ava McElroy. Thank you again.
Okay, due to the spring sports work and other responsibilities, our next recognition, Maple Grove Senior High School Girls Basketball Team Athletes, won't be able to be here, but their second-place finish at state is well-recognized. We offer our congratulations on their achievement. And our final recognition this evening are members of the HOSA team at Oseo Senior High School, who won various titles at the 2025 HOSA State Competition. Coach Eric, will you please introduce your scholars?
Good evening, everybody. And so my name is Eric Brizgornia. I'm one of the EMS program as well as health science magnet instructors, and then also the advisor for the HOSA Future Health Professionals Group at Oseo. And so, one thing to clarify is that our Oseo group is actually made up of students from Oseo Park Center and Maple Grove. And so, that's who we're representing here. And so, we had our state leadership conference this past end of March going into April, and so, we had significant success there. And just one thing I want to share with everybody is that this is not an easy task. Our state has become significantly more competitive in terms of health science in the last few years. And so, I just want to make sure that I've been able to say that. With the success at the state conference, our students qualified now for the International Leadership Conference, which will be in Nashville, Tennessee this coming June. So, I'd like to introduce EMT State Champion Mia Scott. So Mia Junior, planning to pursue a career with being a nurse practitioner. Unfortunately, due to last-minute family obligations, our senior EMT State Champion, so the teammate of Mia Scott here, Hussein Mohammed, was not able to make it tonight. So, I'm sorry, there you go. And then Dental Science State Champion and Pharmacy Science Runner-Up, John Mai. So, please join me once again in congratulating these scholars for a job well-done, and please wish them the best of luck as they continue on to Nashville for international competition this summer.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Student School Board Representative Reports. But as we said, our reps are not here tonight due to their other activities, so there'll be no reports this evening. So we're moving on to the audience opportunity to address the school board. So I'll review a few of the guidelines for those who will speak to the board this evening. As a board, we welcome all voices and strive for public engagement and transparency in our board work. Audience opportunity to address the board is one of the many avenues to achieve this. To ensure all voices are heard, welcomed, and respected in the boardroom, we ask that audience members withhold applause and verbal response to all speakers. In the rare instance of a disruptive audience member, we'll pause and ask that the individual remove themselves from the boardroom. Speakers will be called to the podium in this order. Student, parent, staff, community member, and others. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Comments should be directed to the entire board, not to any individual member. If you have a handover for the board, please place it on the information table or hand it to the Board Secretary Sherry. The Board Secretary will provide copies to board members. The board and audience will listen and not respond back at this time. If you would like somebody to follow up with you on your question or comments, please let the Board Secretary know. Personnel concerns should be directed to the individuals in the following order: Building Principal, Executive Director for Human Resources, Assistant Superintendent, Superintendent, and finally, in writing to the school board. The complete guidelines for public participation are provided on the Meeting Materials Table and on the School Board section of the district website. When I call your name, please come to the microphone and state your name and topic and whether or not you are a district resident. Cindy Devonish Hall.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, school board, school staff, and community members. My name is Cindy Devonish Hall, and I have the honor and privilege of serving as the Community Engagement Experience Manager for the city of Brooklyn Park. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. Thank you for having me. I'm here to share a few important resources and supports for the community. Number one, the Blue Line. The Blue Line Anti-Displacement Survey. As some of you may know, the Blue Line is expected to reach the city of Brooklyn Park by 2030. We are currently gathering input on how to use the anti-displacement funds to support housing, small businesses, and job training. Second, I also brought resources regarding the Northwest Area Survey. The plans continue regarding development on the 700 acres of land. We are hosting an open house on Wednesday, May 7th, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Small Business Center, which is located at 7970 Brooklyn Boulevard. For more information on any of these updates, please go to www.brooklynpark.org. You can also contact me at (612) 946-9401. I also have one more I would like to share, and that is something that is very near and dear to my heart, and that is the BrookLink. BrookLink helps obtain youth employment mentorship for ages 14 to 24. It serves in the area of Brooklyn Center and Brooklyn Park. So again, if you need any information on these services and support, please go to brooklynpark.org, or you can reach out to me, Cindy Devonish Hall, at (612) 946-9401. And I thank you all for your hard work and dedication. I appreciate each one of you. Thank you so much for having me.
Max Mayer.
Hello. Good evening, happy Earth Day. My name is Max Maher, and I live in the district. I'm here tonight because I believe it's important to clarify some of the conversation around the LGBT resolution and its implementation, as discussed at a prior work session. First, it was suggested that because the board never gave explicit direction to create a specific advisory lesson, its development was inappropriate. This raises an important distinction between the roles of governance and administration. School board set the vision, administrators carry it out through implementation. The resolution clearly calls for curricula that respect LGBTQIA+ students and their families. That is board direction. And just like with any other resolution, it's intentionally broad because the details are left to staff. It's not overreached, it's administration doing its job. What's also troubling is the inconsistency. It is acknowledged that the board doesn't typically dictate curriculum or academic initiatives, yet here, when the topic is LGBT inclusion, we hear calls for special oversight and second-guessing. Let's be honest about what that reflects, a double standard. One applied only when the content affirms LGBT students. That's not just inconsistent governance, it risks becoming discriminatory in its effect. Resolution set broad goals, not syllabi. This one explicitly calls for gender-affirming curriculum and pedagogical practices and designates LGBT History and Culture Month. It's not vague or open to interpretation, it's a direct call to support inclusive educational content. To now suggest there is no direction for lesson development is to overlook what's plainly written. Finally, it was claimed that because some students opted out or felt discomfort, the lesson was divisive or damaging. But discomfort is not the same as harm. Learning about marginalized communities may challenge students who haven't had to think about these issues before, but that's part of education. If we removed every topic that made someone uncomfortable, like civil rights or slavery, we'd be erasing essential parts of our shared history. This is also a false equivalence. Feeling discomfort when learning about LGBT identities is not the same as being LGBT and facing daily harassment, exclusion, or invisibility. The stakes are not the same. And it ignores the resolution's purpose, to affirm and protect vulnerable students. If a lesson causes some students to opt out, that's not a reason to cancel inclusive content. It's a reason to strengthen empathy and classroom culture, not retreat from it. In closing, the resolution was passed to ensure dignity, safety, and inclusion for LGBT students, students who still face disproportionate harm in schools. Efforts to walk back its implementation through procedural loopholes or vague discomfort send a message that their inclusion is negotiable. It isn't. If the board values equity, it must hold LGBT students in the same regard as any other group we seek to affirm. That means upholding the resolution not just in words but in practice, and allowing administrators to do the job of implementing it. Our community is watching. So are the students this resolution was meant to protect. Let's not teach them that their existence is up for debate. Thank you.
Michelle Straight.
Hi, my name is Michelle, and I'm a parent and resident in the district. I'm here to talk about the upcoming LGBTQIA+ lesson that is planned for May. Why is the district having this lesson? It has been communicated numerous times to parents and the community that the lesson is required under Minnesota law, but that's not accurate. Although the LGBTQIA+ resolution and lesson don't conflict with state law, it goes well beyond what is required. Why are we having this lesson? The first page of the slide states that LGBTQ students are more likely to be bullied. I would suggest that students who are perceived as being different are a primary focus of bullying, and that is not acceptable. The district has strong policies in place to protect students from bullying or discrimination, whether it's about sexuality, religion, politics, learning differences, or personal beliefs. Why are we having this lesson? Do we have days set aside to teach about Jewish or Muslim people? Do we learn about their histories? Do we attempt to convince people to align with either of those religions? Let's create a welcoming space for all of our students without endorsing specific belief systems. Let's focus on creating a positive school atmosphere where no one is targeted for being different than anyone else. Who performed a review to ensure that this lesson was impartial and accurate? The premise of the lesson is to make space for people to be who they are, but in fact, it seems the space that is being asked for is so that you will be open to embracing gender identity and not for respecting those that don't believe in it. The entire lesson risks making students feel judged or silenced just for having a different perspective. Because this is an opt-out and not an opt-in for high school, many students will be taught this worldview without their parents being aware, as it is very easy to miss emails from the district. This lesson is full of speculation on historical figures. It contains emotionally charged videos, video intended to sway students. It is crucial that the district communicates with honesty to ensure the integrity of our educational system and maintains the confidence and trust of both students and parents. I'm asking the district to take a more balanced and thoughtful approach, one that respects all students, supports emotional well-being, and also sticks to objective facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Schroder.
My name is Jennifer Schroder. I'm all the things for 279 Online, a parent, a teacher, and a strong advocate. I started here in February to speak against the unethical closure of 279 Online Elementary. I received no response to those concerns, and yet, here I am again, raising the same concern, now masked in a different form. Tonight, I need to make something absolutely clear. The voices and needs of our vulnerable scholars at 279 Online, all of our scholars, are still not being heard. Stakeholders are not being consulted in critical decisions. And as we saw with the closure of 279 Online Elementary, this lack of inclusion and transparency carries devastating consequences. While I have countless examples I'd love to share maybe once a month of these reckless decisions, tonight I'll speak to the district decision to move our classrooms from Google Meets to Microsoft Teams, a decision made over a year ago without any input from those who teach and learn in this space every single day. For the past year, I've done what good educators do. I piloted the platform, learned the system, and raised concerns. I shared how this shift undermines the foundation of our synchronous learning, but again, no response. At these board meetings, I hear about how every detail of physical classroom remodels is being meticulously planned, even down to the placement of a single light switch. And yet, when it came to tearing down and And yet, when it came to tearing down and rebuilding the 279 Online classroom, the digital space our scholars enter and live in every single day, there was no blueprint, no vision, and I promise you, no input. The change to Microsoft Teams may have been intended to benefit the wider district. I mean, it's great in the corporate world. But it was not made with 279 Online in mind. And let's be honest, for those of us who don't live in the world of online learning, it's really hard to grasp the complexity. It's easy to overlook what we need in order to thrive. When I expressed concern about this switch to Microsoft Teams to the board, I was told that, quote, "Significant research and thought went into this change," end quote. But I have to ask, what kind of research matters to you? Did we research the number of scholars who stopped coming to my class when I piloted Teams? Did we research how scholars and teachers currently use Google Meets and why it works? Did we research what our community, our actual stakeholders, need to be successful? I'm realistic. I know speaking here may not reverse this decision because I know it takes true, because I know it takes true humility to walk something back once it's been set in motion. But I also know this. The choice to ignore our voices and needs is creating barriers for our school, our staff, and most importantly, our scholars. 279 Online is not like other schools, but that's not a weakness. It's a strength. Because it looks different, it requires a different lens, ones that recognizes its beauty, its uniqueness and its potential. It deserves to be understood, supported and designed with care. I'll end as I did in February with a quote that was used at our own district's Equity Seminar. Some, you should all attend. Nothing about us, without us, is for us. So I beg you, please hear us. Please allow 279 Online to thrive.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Heil.
Good evening, Chair Prince, Vice Chair Brooks and School Board members. As we enter this time of year, we're reminded this brings with it a season of change. Changes that impact both our students and our district as a whole. Many of our students advancing to the next grade, some exciting milestones are being reached, and with that, new chapters are beginning. We also know that decisions related to staffing, attendance boundaries and various shifts are a natural part of our school year as well. I want to acknowledge that change can be difficult. It can bring uncertainty and it's normal to have questions or concerns during this time. I want to ensure you all that despite the challenges that we may face, our goal will always remain the same, which is to provide the best possible education that meets the unique needs of our scholars and staff. While some of these changes may be beyond our direct control, please know that we're committed to making thoughtful adjustments as needed. This is a continual process and is one that's always been part of the educational landscape. We are listening. We do hear your concerns and we are taking time to understand the needs of our community. We will continue to address those needs as best as we can within the parameters of the district, always keeping in mind our shared commitment to our students' successes and well-being. So this time, we do thank you for your support and your understanding, your dedication to our community. We need to do it together. We will navigate these changes and continue to provide a nurturing, inclusive and thriving environment for all. Thank you. So this evening, a regular part of the Superintendent's Report is to share points of pride. We take time to share the points of pride to recognize and celebrate the scholars, staff and our community members who are contributing to our mission. I have members of our district cabinet here to assist in sharing some examples from last month.
In the area of achieving dreams, three Osseo Area Schools athletes were chosen, hard-chosen each spring as the 2025 Athena Award winners, which recognize outstanding senior female athletes from the Twin Cities metro area high schools. Jordan Odie, the Maple Grove Senior High winner, participated in basketball and cross-country and was recently named Miss Basketball Minnesota, recognizing her as the best basketball, high school girls' basketball player in the state. Macy Patton, the Osseo Senior High winner, has participated in hockey, lacrosse, tennis, softball and trap shooting and has won a few All-Conference Honorable Mentions and Most Improved Awards. Maya Woods, the Park Center Senior High winner, participated in diving, Nordic ski, gymnastics and track and field. Woods set the school record for track and field in the 300-meter hurdles and is a six-time All-Conference recipient. Congratulations to these talented student athletes. Crestview Elementary School students put their hard work and dedication on display and wowed the audience with an engaging school play on March 20th. Twenty-six students between kindergarten and third grade presented "The Enchanted Bookstore", a story about six book characters that long to help a bookstore owner save her struggling store, but they can't be seen by human eyes or else they risk disappearing forever. The play participants worked hard after several, after school to memorize and rehearse together for several weeks with the help of staff members and families pitching in to help with costumes and props.
Though boys volleyball has been a club sport option for the past few years, 2025 marks the sport's inaugural year as a fully sanctioned athletic option through the Minnesota State High School League. At Maple Grove, Osseo and Park Center Senior High Schools, the student athletes are enjoying their first year as a recognized sport and no longer just a club. Maple Grove Senior High sophomore and captain Ryan Patton said, "I think boys volleyball being recognized shows the amount of dedication and work we put in. It allows us to expand as a club and shows how many boys want to play the sport." Park Center head coach Michelle Chen said, "These boys are so passionate about being able to play for their school. It's a great opportunity for them to be involved and feel that school pride. We've gotten so much buy-in here and the program is just exploding. I can't get them off the court. They keep asking to practice more." In the area of contributing to community, when the Food Group launched its March for Hunger food drive last month, the Kid Stop School Age Care Program led the way in bringing Woodland Elementary School together to make a positive impact on food insecurity. Staff, students and families gathered donations at the school for the entire month of March. The Food Group requested culturally-specific foods that reflected and supported the traditions of East African, Latino, East European, Southeast Asian, Indigenous, Native and West African communities across the Twin Cities. By participating in the food drive, students learned that food is an important part of every culture, that different communities have different food traditions and that helping others in the community can make a meaningful impact.
Eighth-grade students at Brooklyn Middle Steam School recently completed a mural in collaboration with an artist-in-residence project. Approximately 20 students signed up to take part in the mural project, where the teens worked with an artist-in-residence to collaboratively design, plan and paint a mural that illustrates the theme of belonging within the school community. In the area of lifelong learning, students from the Osseo Education Center recently participated in a field trip to the Eastman Nature Center to learn about the process of making maple syrup. Students explored the grounds of the nature center, learning how to identify maple leaves and trees, how to determine the age of the trees and what time of year is best for tapping maple trees. Once they found a tree ready to be tapped, each student helped to drill the tap hole before the spout was inserted and the bucket was secured to the tree. As the sap started to drip out, the students had the opportunity to try the sap to see what it tasted like.
April is Mung Heritage Month and Park Center Senior High School recently added to the celebration for its Student in Mung courses by providing a week-long Mung cooking experience class with a professional chef. Some of the activities that took place during the week-long experience included learning about eight types of flavors prominent in Mung foods and taste testing each and adjectives to describe flavors in Mung, learning about and sampling Mung desserts that would traditionally be made for celebrations. Students worked to pound foods with traditional way using mortar and pestle as they learned about traditional Mung cooking methods compared with more modern methods. In the area of mission-driven employees, for 58 years, Osseo Area Schools' current and former employees and community members have put on an annual variety show to raise money for scholarships to assist graduating students in their post-secondary plans. This year, the performers invite the community to come and check out "There's Something in the Air" April 24th through the 27th. Learn more and get tickets by visiting wastebasketreview.org.
And we have a few final notes and reminders for tonight. Tomorrow, an important community meeting has been held at Crestview Elementary School to better understand the programming and design desires of the school's rebuilds. We would love to have your input. The event will be held at 6:15 PM in the gym. Please check out our website for more information. Also, please join us this Saturday, April 26th, for the Osseo Area Schools Indian Education 28th Annual Powwow at Osseo Middle School. Grand entry will begin at 1:00 PM with a senior honoring at 2:00 PM and a feast at 5:00 PM. And for a few weeks this spring, high school students at Maple Grove, Osseo and Park Senior High Schools will be taking over our district Instagram page to give the community an inside look into the life of their schools. Follow our Instagram page at @osseoSchools to follow along. And thank you for your continued support. And that concludes tonight's Superintendent Report.
Thank you. Our next agenda item are the School Board member reports. We'll start down here. Director Dawson, do you have a report or update?
Yeah, just real quick. A RISE committee, I believe, was last week, so spent a lot of time talking about membership and increasing membership, but then also kind of things that are happening under district like Dr. Heil talked about with Crestview and just reimagining Crestview and our community, that building and that space. And so it was a good conversation around that. Then the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, a few weeks ago met, we had Representative Nadeau, who is one of our legislators and Representative Green, just talking about this legislative session, specifically trying to find a common ground around education specifically. And it's been, you know, challenging, just in terms of just the session in general, but just that things are moving along. A deadline is, or the end of session is May 19th. La House Finance has an omnibus bill and the education policy has advanced an omnibus bill. It's pretty bare bones. And then the Senate Finance and Ed are really looking at just different bills right now. So there's a lot more to do in the last couple of weeks ahead that will impact us now and in the future. So just keeping, staying engaged on that piece.
Director Foster, do you have a report?
The DPAC Committee met and I actually didn't attend this one because they're wrapping up and getting ready to present to us. So I'm excited. I want to get a sneak peek. So they're going to be presenting to us in the next couple of weeks here. And then we had a policy committee meeting last week, I believe, and that was my first time. So it was interesting getting to know the hang of things.
No reports.
Director Tate, do you have any reports or updates?
No reports for me.
Director Mitchell?
Yeah, we had two. Last week, the fiscal, kind of the end of year wrap-up and review. We had the OPED update, which is a post-employment benefit trust fund for retirement. So that's a very thorough report on that. And benchmarking against other districts, again, very informative, in-depth analysis and a legislative update there as well. And ECMAC we had last night and John got us done before. I love you said it was still light out when we were done, so thank you, John. And again, some updating reports on capacity, monitoring the under and over-capacity conditions in all of our schools. Recommendations from ECMAC have been submitted to Dr. Heil and will come to the board next month, so we can look forward to that as well. And going forward, district staff will continue to monitor the impact on enrollment and capacity. And going forward, also ECMAC members will be monitoring and considering the potential impact of these factors related to the enrollment capacity, factors at each school, a site in each building. So it's ongoing work. Thanks.
And on that note, we just had our groundbreaking ceremony for the new elementary school. So we'll have pictures of those by next month, I'm sure. But to your note on the work continues, so ECMAC doesn't stop. We continue to monitor. We are constantly evaluating the conditions of our school's capacity and needs. So it doesn't stop. It keeps going. For me, I have my Brooklyn Bridge Alliance for Youth Joint Power Board Report. So the BBA Board met. We had a number of items around our agenda and budget priority update. But I do want to highlight one. I'm going to read it because I think it's interesting and you'll find it interesting. So part of the, they're in year three of three of the Black Mental, Youth Black Mental Health work. And they had a demonstration project around safety online, so really social media and the use of social media. So they had students who took the course and responded kind of with a comparison group to show kind of how kids really understanding the impact of social media and online activity with them. So before the course, most students admitted to heavy social media use without understanding how algorithms influence their habits. After the course, many students reported changing their behaviors, taking breaks from apps, deleting platforms temporarily and educating their peers. Perhaps most importantly, students left with a heightened awareness of how social media affects their mental health and how policy changes could foster healthier online experiences. So in, if you don't get the reports sent to you, I'll make sure to forward it to you. So just let me know. I think most people get them. But there's a whole report and kind of what the students learned and what their before and after results were. So that's really exciting work that they're doing. And they also held several Youth Days at the Capitol, the YMCA Youth Day at the Capitol and the Black Youth Mental Health Day at the Capitol as well. So there's some pretty big events. So the report's just jam-packed with so many great initiatives that they're doing to affect youth in Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center and that affects not just us but other districts as well. So that's the only report that I have. Okay, so the next agenda item is the Consent Agenda. So board members, our consent agenda items this evening include meeting minutes, extended educational trips, fundraisers, personnel items, grants, many construction bid approvals, insurance renewals, software renewals, District 287 long-term facilities, maintenance approval and settlement agreements. Are there any items that you would like to remove for separate consideration? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as printed?
So moved.
Moved by Director Mitchell. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by, seconded by Director Brooks. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll pose nay. Motion passes six to zero. Okay, we'll move on to our action items. So we have two employment contracts on the agenda for action this evening. First is the Kid Stop Instructors contract. Yvonne Schwartz Lind, Executive Director of Human Resources, will share the information.
So I will be going through highlights of the Kid Stop Instructors contract. And this contract is in, will be effective July 1st of 2024 through June 30th of 2026. The EMO Kid Stop Instructors is a group of 19 employees comprised of lead instructors and four-star instructors. And so for this two-year contract term, the Kid Stop Instructors will receive a 4% base increase for the first year, one and a half increase for their second contract year. Four-stop instructors, four-star instructors will receive a 9% base increase for step one in year one, 4% for steps two and three in year one. All steps will receive a one and a half increase for year two of the contract. Lead Kid Stop Instructors will receive a 9% increase for step one in year one, 4% for steps two and three, and then a 1% and one and a half for those steps two and three. Finally, there will be a pay differential for four-star instructors with a teaching license. The contract also, of course, covers some changes in terms of benefits coverage with the four and three percent increases in district contributions for years, one and, years one and two respectively. A little bit of changes, there were some changes in the long-term disability income protection and dental coverage as well as deferred compensation. The total package is consistent with the financial parameters established by the board. The total overall package is 8.4% across the two-year term of the contract for a total investment of $173,374. And with the ratification of the contract, HR and payroll will begin implementation.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between the ISD 279 School Board and Kid Stop Instructors July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2026? Moved by Director Brooks. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Dawson. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to zero. And the next, we have the recommendation of approval for the RNs and LPNs contract. Yvonne?
Thank you. The contract term for the RNs and LPNs is the same term, which is July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2026. And this is a group comprised of thirty employees of, as we said, registered nurses and licensed practical nurses. The terms of the contract will be four percent increase for all steps in Year One, two percent increase for all steps in Year Two. In terms of benefits, there will be increases to single HSA contribution and then, of three percent, and then for the employee plus one and family, increase of four percent in Year One, three percent in Year Two. Also, the terms of the contract, the terms of the contract also involve some changes to long-term disability as well as dental insurance. Again, this contract is consistent with the financial parameters established by the board. The total two-year investment is nine point six-two for a total financial investment of two hundred five thousand, two hundred five, five hundred thirty-two thousand over the term of the two-year agreement. And with the ratification of the contract, HR and payroll will begin implementation.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between the ISD 279 School Board and registered nurses and licensed practical nurses July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2026?
So moved.
Moved by Director Foster. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Mitchell. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to zero. So it's always a good night when we can complete contracts and recognize the contributions of those in those bargaining groups. And with the Kid Stop Instructors, it's really critical programming in our, in our district. And of course, we know that with the nurses, their jobs keep getting more and more challenging in the conditions that, that they're facing in serving students. So, so it's, we just want to recognize and appreciate the work of those two groups along with all of our employees as always. All right, our final action item this evening is Gifts to the District. So tonight, we have Gift to the District totaling one hundred three thousand fifteen dollars and twenty-two cents. Is there a motion to approve the Gifts to the District totaling one hundred three thousand fifteen dollars and twenty-two cents?
So moved.
Moved by Director Brooks. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Foster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to zero. And thank you every month to those who contribute. It's always a different mix of group and people, and that just adds to the ability to continue to do great programming in the district. Before we conclude, I just do want to reference back to the community meeting. That's taking place tomorrow evening at Crestview at 6:15. And it's really a significant opportunity for the community to weigh in as we think about, I think the timing is fantastic as we're, have the groundbreaking ceremony in one part of our district. We're reimagining and bringing in the community voice for how we work with the repurposed site and rebuilt site in Brooklyn Park at, with the Crestview location. So I just encourage everybody to attend that and participate. We don't have these opportunities too often to really reimagine what's possible to drive student achievement, the type of programming that we want there, really what we want to see at that site that's going to build something really incredible in that part of our district for our future. So please consider attending that. All right. Our final agenda item is adjournment. There will not be a closed session for negotiation strategy tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting at 6:49 PM?
So moved.
Moved by, was that Director Dawson?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Director Brooks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to zero, six to zero, the meeting is adjourned.